All right, time is now six o'clock. I will call the township planning commission meeting to order from March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. Hey, here, Casey?
Here.
Jesse?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Todd?
Here.
John?
Here.
And Kevin?
Here.
Agenda for tonight, is there anything that we need to handle or any changes?
Motion to approve the agenda.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have the approval of the minutes from February twenty fifth and the resolution for PC twenty five. And three, we're not here that basically we're not vote, right?
Right.
Okay. Let's see. If you have that or make a motion.
Motion to approve the February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five meeting minutes and the resolution C twenty five.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. All right, next up, we have public comment. We do have a couple of items on the agenda for tonight. So if you would like to speak on any of the items on the agenda, down far there, we'll have public hearing for that. We have a special land use for the motorsports park and then again, the unfinished business for the event center on McMillan. So we will have time dedicated to those. This is just a general public comment. You can have up to three minutes if you'd like to ask a question. Take your three minutes, whatever you'd like to do in there. Otherwise, we will have those other opportunities throughout the meeting there where you have an opportunity to talk there.
I would suggest to take a second and think on something. I don't like to speak publicly, so I get nervous and this will tell you I might get shaky and whatever, but just forgive me. So this, my stance is, well, my, my subject is between my venue and Mr. Tate Holmes. And I think you've done an outstanding job. Everything you follow the letter of the law, you've done all the setbacks, all the and stuff, it looks great. I'm into personal freedoms. I'm into supporting people doing things on their property. I support what you're doing. I have to abstain because I have a venue myself and I'm objecting and opinion about mine right now. But it has nothing to do with you. Don't take anything personally. Please don't, you take anything personally. This is just something that we came across in the book, the Dalton Township Bible, if you want to call it. We, we do our best with ambiguity with every subject, right? We try to look at each individual thing and make things work for everyone. I saw somebody post, the name was Al Richards, a clip of one of our meetings and he said masters of confusion. That was his only comment. And only for this reason, I kind of agree. When, when I applied for mine, I came in humbly asking for permission. Super grateful to things it's doing well. Having fun with it. I'm nervous. Okay, sorry. So forgive me. There were some things that I had to do. One of them was combining my properties together, my five acre lot and my two and a half acre lot. I didn't really understand it because the book didn't give any justification or reason why. It just said the venue must be placed on the primary parcel where the residence is. So I didn't question it. It was like, well, that sucks because that parcel in the back, the five acres is less than two hundred bucks a meter per acre. Cheap. And it's completely vacant. There's nothing on it. The front, obviously to an app, that's got my house and everybody knows what tax assessments are doing. They just keep going, fuck, I forgot. We're all feeling the pain. So now because of the rule in the book that I didn't question because I didn't want to sound stupid. Now I'm paying increased taxes for the rest of my life because we had to combine these two parcels. And I don't have a structure. I didn't build a structure. I didn't put a well and put a section. I mean, this thing is like, I'm using a quarter acre of my five for wooden bench seats in the woods and I just can't figure out why I had to combine those parts and be subject more tax. The second part, I think it was like subsection tens alludes to the fact that if it's being put into agricultural use, it's not subject to the combination. But my property was ag before. It's been ag for over a hundred years. And I actually had a LLC form called Tall Pine Tree Farms in twenty twenty. Harvesting timber and, and using it for sawlogs, planting the trees and operating an agricultural tree farm on that five acres. So when I had raised the question, well, are we going to have to force that on Mr. Tate Holmes for his venue? Well, no, because he's going agriculture with it. Which is partly true. And in ambiguity, we're trying to make it work for him, right? That's our job. We're trying to make things work for people. It's, it's really grading on a curve and kind of grabbing for straws, but we're trying to accommodate and do something because he has a beautiful plan. And I, I really like it and I support it and we talk about working together. So, I mean, there's absolutely no reason that I'm against it at all. I just don't understand why if you're putting up a commercial building, putting in well accepted pretension, all this stuff, why those lots don't have to be combined, but my did.
Because they do. I was, I didn't watch the last video. They do. We get to that when we get to that section.
Do they?
Yes, I've done hours of research today. So I'll let you know when we get to that section.
Yeah, I, I guess I don't see the justification for it and I don't see why anybody should impose that on me. I just want to reestablish my two separate parcels and save me the, the rest of my life of increased taxes. So I have to now abstain from that portion of this. Hope I'm being okay with my.
Are there any other public comments? Go ahead.
He suggested I write down what I wanted to say because last month ago, I can't think of what I wanted to say. I'm not used to this at all.
Real quick, just what was your, I'm sorry, your name and your address.
Steve Fine. Twenty three seven East McMillan. Tied to his property. Like here.
Okay.
I'm really the only one that's tied to it. Anyway. I didn't understand first the agricultural permit. So I, I thought it was for Mike's horses and cows. Nobody in the neighborhood, he hadn't talked to anybody about it. He didn't talk to any neighbors that I know. I watched all the township meetings, the one I missed. And it's just going to be for his cows and stuff, so it wasn't a problem. He never talked to me, but in the meetings you had asked, some of you asked him to make sure he talked to the neighbors. He never did. I was getting concerned after all of that. So I finally walked over and I talked to the operator. I asked him, you know, what's going on in the plan because I heard from him. The answer was Mike told me he was not getting any use out of the wooded property. So he's clearing it and he's going to put in a pasture. So I let it go completely because I trusted nothing from him, but his operators got, they got a plan. It's just going to be his horse. It's just for his horses again. Whenever his horses get out, I call them and go over and get them and tell them your horses are in my yard. You know, we've been getting along for years until now. So then a little bit later, he's still, I'm still waiting to hear from him. He comes walking in my front, my front driveway and I'm working on my front porch replacing wood, air hammer, framing the hammer. And he walks in, he's coming right toward me. I'm standing in front of my garage. And then he makes a quick left and goes over to our boundary and puts a flag on the tree to mark it for somebody else that it's working. And then, so I'm I wait for him to come in, but he's got his hat down like this, you know, and I go, I don't know what's going on. He comes back out from the woods and he's walking this way toward my driveway again. And I start walking toward him and he turns out and leaves. All this time, he's supposed to be and saying that he's stopping at my house and he's going to talk to me, but that I'm never home. I'm retired. He's avoiding me, you know, he's hiding this from me the whole summer. I finally find out about this when you sent me the second notice a month ago and it said, there's a venue, you know, or whatever you call it. He's, uh, he's going to do this big barn and everything. But then he comes over and knocks on the door and tells me about it. Well, I got it now, you know, almost a year later. Now I know what's going to happen. That's, I know where I'm at. The other thing is I always moved this wedding building. He's apparently it was too wet. So we moved it back. Now it's behind my house. And my deck's up higher. So now when I sit on my deck, I'm looking, I'm going to have to watch a wedding every weekend. Right there. It's from, from here to the car from this is commercial stuff. I have an hour one and and I don't like. Thanks for your concern.
You're welcome. That's all I have to say. Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other general comments that anyone would like to make?
Can I comment on that, Mr. Luke?
We actually, we're into the, that's public hearing. We're, this is just a general public hearing now. So we'll get down to that portion here in a minute. I'll open that one up again. Everyone, again, you've heard. He has a chance to speak on that if he'd like, or again, three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to take a three minute now just to cover in general? In general public comments? All right, I will close the public hearings, the general public hearing at six fifteen. And now we are going to go with items for public hearing tonight, which we have the special use for motorsports amendment for motorsports.
You might want to sit down.
As I've raised?
Yes.
All right, do we have someone here from the motor park? All right, if you'd like to.
Before we do that, I think we should talk about Kevin.
Hey, wait.
Okay.
So do you want to state because you're a neighbor?
No, that's not, there's no legal basis. This is a neighbor has to thing. So I, I have just a question for Kevin. Are you racing there this year? Is there a chance that you will have financial gain making, if you win a race, you will make money? So they will not cut you, the company will not cut you a check or pay you cash or anything?
Race tracks will pay.
Okay.
If not going to gain any finances.
That's, that's not, if I do an excavating job and I lose money on the job, I still have a financial stake in that. It, that's it's not whether you make a profit, it's whether you, that company would write you a check. So if that, if that's occurring, then he does need to abstain, but I mean, you guys can talk about it if you want, but it's very clear in our own township that, that anybody who has a financial standing with the company needs to abstain from, from voting. So.
Do we vote on whether we feel that's appropriate for him not to be on there or do we just have a discussion and then make a decision?
In the ordinance here, it just says if it's one of the top two rules, which is financial, you don't even have to vote. It just is.
Something where understanding is the member will either refuse themselves or if they're unsure, they need to refuse themselves. They will bring it up and then you would vote on that.
Okay.
So they, they always have the option to refuse themselves without vote. They always need to disclose that type of conflict of interest.
Okay. And so that potential conflict you're saying is just because the racetrack could write him a check directly?
Yeah, correct.
If he won?
Correct. If he wins. It's not really about whether he spends way more money on the pastime. It's just simply the company writing him a check. Is, that's where the problem lies.
But if I pay seventy to get in and they give me a check for sixty, am I making money?
The fact that they're writing anything to you is the problem apparently. That's my understanding of it. Because you could go into that all day. Like I have to abstain in a motion later today, but I would have to drag my company, my husband's company's financials to prove whether we made money on the job. It's just, it's, it's easier just to say like, yeah, there could be a financial gain and the company is writing our company checks and just leave it at that.
Well, we appreciate you recusing yourself. Thank you, sir. All right, so the remainder of the board members, we have someone here that would like to speak out there. If you could tell us what you're looking for. Kind of give us a little bit exactly that kind of what you're, you've written here for us, but if you have anything you'd like to say about or any explanation, we have a little bit of time when we give people prior to us doing the public hearing, a chance to hear what it is you're looking for.
Well, I'm Heidi Merrill and I own the track and we are just asking to renew the current curfew that we had last year. We, I talked with Stephen about it. We're trying to do more events there. Not just necessarily on Saturday and not necessarily a racing event. We would like to do things for Sundays. One being that we would actually have classes for our little mini wedge kids. We also would like to keep them open for, I've been approached about doing Dalton Days right out there in the big front part of the track area. And we want to be able to, Friday night that we need to have approved because we're doing a special show for a couple of different classes. But other than that, we're just trying to keep going and I don't know, Stephen, did I miss anything? Was it the twenty four night or the twenty two night?
I believe it's twenty, you're requesting twenty five.
And that's total events, all including racing and the other, everything else, twenty five events or?
That would be just race.
Just, okay. And then you have an, an idea on the number of what other events you're looking for? Like you said, Sundays and like starting at a certain Sunday and then moving for so many weeks or months or?
Nothing definitive, but we would be able to be, we would be done by eight o'clock. Nothing has really come through yet. We're waiting on some answers from some people. And then of course we have our practices during the week, which are always done by eight o'clock.
How many did you have for last year from the events? How many number of events?
If we didn't have the rain outs, we'd have had twenty two or twenty three.
Okay, so you're just looking to bring it to twenty five, okay. And you're currently at eleven forty five, isn't he, correct?
Yep, I want to just keep it that way.
So that's not, it's just not to extend the curfew, but continue at this point. So the only real question probably from, from others will be just the community events. If you have an idea of how many roughly you're looking for, I mean, it helps, we could approve something that's hard to approve, you know, really nothing concrete or?
I think I have approximately ten Sundays to determine on what we will do. And we're know that we're going to try to do the Dalton Days on a Sunday afternoon. I need to get more community involvement. So we have different things on Sundays.
You said you got twenty one to eight o'clock on Sundays?
Yeah.
All right, is there any other, anything else that you want to tell us or anything you'd like to mention before we open up on the, on the comments?
I do know that there was one night that we went over curfew and I did get a letter from Stephen, but it was just one night that we went over.
How far was that? By how much roughly?
Fifteen, twenty minutes.
Okay.
What were the circumstances of going over?
That was a rough night. Um, an issue with some of the classes not getting done in time. And we had some, we had some accidents that took a little bit longer to clean up.
So that's kind of the stuff you mentioned before that you have as part of racing. It's not exactly a clean thing. We're not racing bicycles. It's stuff that can happen. We understand.
Sometimes those accidents have to take longer to get cleared off. And if there is any fluid on the track, then we have to make sure it's all dry.
Okay. All righty. Any, I guess if there are any questions, we can save them for when we get through the part here, but let's go ahead now. I'll open up the public hearing at six twenty three. And again, if you would like to make a comment, you're allowed three minutes and just state your name and address and then you may give us your comments. I'll open that up at six twenty three.
Yeah, my K home twenty nine eighty seven Dillon Road. Just so I might know that I highly support Thunderbird Raceway. I raced there back in the seventies, seventy seven, seventy eight, seventy nine. Back then, anything went, anything goes. And I understand what she's trying to do to get revenue. I've been there at Thunderbird. I still follow Thunderbird. And it's, Saturday night, you don't get a lot of people maybe coming. I'd actually like to see also motorcycle racing go there. We used to race motorcycles years ago and at Winston Speedway. Maybe possibly a chance to make some revenue on a Sunday afternoon closing at eight o'clock. But anything I think that she could do to make any kind of revenue to help her business grow, because I know it's tough to make business out there. But I support and would like to see it continue. And I'll probably even be there watching family race.
Anybody else?
No, it's Michael Belt. I have a history with the frac as well.
Okay.
I want to thank you for helping me through college because I used to hurt my stream wagon out there before you had all the all the commission stuff out there. And I, I thank you for helps people, clearly helped this guy get through college. I support him.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else?
Do we have any record of who files complaints when there's a racetrack event going over?
Wasn't me.
No.
You're going with it.
And that was just, we had said that was one event? The ones that they had, just they have one event.
That was one racing event. There's also a practice that did go over, but I couldn't find anything that specifically with the mess.
There was one.
It says eight.
Stephen, was that one complaint for the entire season?
No, it says in the packet, a couple of complaints about practice and one complaint about a race.
There's, one was regarding noise.
They're all regarding noise.
Yeah. Two emails I received about practice and then one I received about a racing event.
Any other public comments? Yep. All right, for the racetrack?
No.
Okay, yeah, we're just, we're just going to do right now the racetrack. It's one point right now. Any other on the public hearing for the racetrack? All right, I will go ahead and close that at six point six. So looking at what we have here. I've had some discussions before. We need to look at something down the road. I think we were probably in the we need to get something more permanent rather than doing this on a yearly thing where we bring it, we dance through it, we dance through and dancer. And it's it just needs to, and get to something where you know what it is, we know what it does. It's a business. It's, you know, something that's here in our community and it's something that was here long before I ever was here. So I appreciate a bunch of several people and again, so one of the things our township is known for. So I guess at this point, we need to, as a board decide, we have the things we're kind of looking at here, the special land use to continue the eleven forty five curfew. Extend the actual racing events to twenty five and then the community events. Let's have some dialogue here. Is there anything anyone has to say as far as?
Well, the only thing I'm going to say, and I'm going to keep it very brief because I know none of you care at all, but I did a lot of reading today and if this ever went to court, we would lose a hundred percent. We have an established township noise ordinance and that, that does not permit this to go this late. We've already extended it past the ten o'clock, which is when businesses have to shut down in our, our general ordinance. We've extended it to eleven, which is the normal curfew, and then we've extended it to eleven forty five. I think what, what members of the commission are now understanding is what it's like to live right there. What, what the decibel level, what the sound level is, it, it's, it's akin, when you're right adjacent to the track in one of the houses there. And there's only seven people that received a notification. The other five people that received a notification are all vacant parcels. So there's only seven people that live there. Within what the township deems, what with the state law deems as what you would notify people for. So akin to being adjacent to the track is a lawnmower, a hair dryer, like a jet engine from a hundred feet away. By the time it gets to a mile away, which is where one of our commission members lives, you're looking at normal conversation, a dishwasher running. By the time it gets to our most distant commission member, it's a computer on, a fan humming, light traffic in the distant or normal conversation, but distant. One of our commission members that even could be akin to on a, on a quieter time with the quieter cars, just rustling leaves or a quiet suburb. Because you, you don't realize what trees, the amount of trees and the amount of houses, all of that absorb decibels on the way over. And so I, I know that it's not going to change your decision whatsoever. You guys have already made up your minds, but it's something to keep in mind is that if this was ever challenged in court, we likely would lose. It likely would cost the township a lot of money and it, it might be better if we could come up with a compromise that benefits the business and the community. Previous, when we got the extension, the, the previous business owner was willing to start earlier. We, we split it on either end. And they started a half hour earlier. We gave them a half hour. We tried to compromise. There's been no such compromise in the last like three years. So.
Yes, there has. Yes, there has. You said the same argument last year.
And you told us you couldn't start earlier, that nobody could get out of work.
They did it up starting early, we started five thirty. That's for the little kids to get on the track. And the quiet cars are the ones that race last. So we're doing everything that we told you that we were going to do. And what's the, what's the point of having a special land permit, special land use permit? If you're going to say all that it goes against your noise ordinance?
Because noise is the one thing that courts don't take kindly to. You can run a business, if you want to farm and garden until the middle of the night and run like a commercial landscaping company and you're not making any noise, you're, you're not going to have a problem. But no, like, people, noise, it's a problem. Because that's the biggest, most, you can't, planning commissions can't tell people to move. I mean, I thought that they're like, there was even a court in New Hampshire that decided, the, a woman looked at a house. She didn't know there was a racetrack there. And when the racing started, they shut down the racetrack because it was violating their own township noise ordinance. Even though she moved into that area with the racetrack there, she just said she didn't know about it. So it's because noise is the number one thing that can take away from the peace and serenity of a community. That, that's why.
Okay, well, any other comments?
Oh, I agree, we should do something more permanent.
Yeah. I think tonight we have this to give them some, yeah, tonight, of course, but sometimes look into project over here. And we put that on our list of topics that we like, that we could make something more permanent. And like Casey said, something that would count.
I do want to add that most nights we were done by eleven.
I was just going to ask you, what time do you shoot to be done by?
Eleven.
You shoot to be done by eleven? How many nights were you done at eleven?
I'd say eighty, ninety percent of them.
They're on a lot of weekends.
Okay.
It's our weekend.
That's our big push, we don't want the drivers there any longer than they need to be. We definitely don't want them on the track any longer than they need to be.
Right. Yeah, we, we talked about that last year and I remember, I mean, you don't want to pay people any longer than you have to. So you, you don't have any incentive to stay there till eleven forty-five, you want to get them out at eleven if you can.
That's just, and that's only because of the accidents or if we haven't called an ambulance or taken a driver to the hospital or whatnot or inspector.
I make most recommend the township board approve the proposed special land use permit for the Thunderbird Raceway at three fifty west Riley Thompson Road to extend racing hours for the twenty twenty-five racing season until eleven forty-five PM. To increase the number of permitted racing events to twenty-five and permit for community events to be held on the premises with the, what was I saying? With the understanding that the Sunday community events will be completed by eight. Motion, support. We'll take a roll call vote. Dave? Yes? Casey?
No.
Okay. Jesse?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Kevin, I'm Steve. It's four. All right, next up we have under communications, we have some planning and building report for February twenty twenty-five. We have administrative site plan approval. And you said there was, I saw in there that's a restaurant.
Yes.
Been approved for that?
Yes. Restaurant, wait, takeout with fewer than six tables, I believe. It's the lowest amount of parking necessary for a restaurant.
Okay, beautiful.
Stephen, could you describe where exactly that is? I mean, I don't know where Fourth Street is and...
Yeah, so this is at the corner of Fourth and Fulton.
Hold.
In the recently renovated building.
Okay.
It's going to be on the ground floor there.
Okay.
A whole big one, yeah.
And it's specific to tape.
Takeout and I believe there's going to be six tables.
Okay, I missed that part, yeah.
All right. Now we will move on to our unfinished business. And move on to PC twenty-five there, so we, the BL East McMillan. Also have special land use and site plan review for the special event. And then, so we had our public hearing last, last month, so we don't need to redo that, correct Stephen?
Correct.
Okay.
I didn't say there'd be a comment period later, so you should have a comment period as well.
All right, then I'll skip that. Now it's, I tell you, why don't we give you gentlemen a chance to speak and tell us where we, where we went from last meeting to this meeting, what we've addressed.
Okay. These are the back time drawings that we had drawn up. So controversial situation that we had to address, which I think we have. There's our site plans we've gone through.
Are these the same that are in the...
Possibly. Backing up, we're going to go through what you guys planned. And we did, go ahead and we hired an engineer to come in and take care of our, of the water retention program. Because we addressed that issue and you'll see on the site plan there, we addressed that and made it a possibility for the life and taking it right down our property. The reason I moved the barn back, and we did also do two of the things, three of the things here. One, we reduced the size of our building. Due to the fact that it was larger maybe than it should have been, we reduced it to forty-nine hundred square feet, not eight thousand. And the reason I moved it back is for two reasons. One is to keep the noise back a little bit more from Steve's house. I moved it over a little bit, wake up his house. And we moved to a wake-up row of retention area. So I, I tried to take care of that. As far as our noise level goes, our building will be shut down at eleven o'clock. There will be no more music going on or anything else. It'll be quiet time after eleven. So, and also I mentioned we will be insulating the building, it's going to have a special foam through the building to keep the heat and the air and also the noise to a very, very minimal level. As far as me not talking to the neighbors, I tried to keep everyone in communication. Although I didn't start that project in the summer, I did start it till October. And I tried to meet with all the neighbors and let them know, hey, this, what's going on? I mean, if everything's cool with you guys, I'm going to move on. I only really cleared one point one acre of property. And that property was nothing, jack pine, briar bush, you couldn't even walk through it. It was a massive piece of property, it was an outdated property. I cleared one point one acres, what I did. I did speak with a lot of the neighbors, in fact, I have these I'd like to show for the, these signatures are from the neighbors that are across the street and just down the street from that. So we tried to, we don't, we don't want to war here with our neighbors. We, we're not no big corporation, we're in the neighborhood for forty years, we're not here to cause grief or hardships for anyone. We tried to work with, with Steve on it, I mean, he said he's been a good neighbor, which he has. I've never, never had really any grief with him. He got mad, I mean, one time if you were, when he came to me and said, hey, I want to buy that, those two acres, and I said, no. And he said, why not? And I said, because I don't want to. Why do you want it? He said, I want to build, I want to build spec homes. I said, no, Steve, that's not going to happen. It is.
I was no little permission for further...
We're going to, we're just going to make the comments right, I'm giving him this opportunity to get our, our comments, we'll give that in a second.
So I am, it's okay.
He's, he's in the middle of his presentation, we're not going to let him do that.
So, so anyway, I, I tried to keep communications open. I was trying to get down to everybody's house, a lot of times when I get home from work, I don't get done driving till nine, ten o'clock at night. Not a time to go talk to neighbors. Weekends, I'm kind of busy with a lot of other stuff going on, but I did communications, tried to keep communications, every Friday at the street. We addressed, I think, all the comments and the, what the board had for stipulations. Like I said, we did change the, the venue, the size of the barn. This is what the new barn will look like now. We had to, we changed this up, it's only going to be a forty-eight hundred square foot building, so it'll be a lot smaller building. And it'll only have a hundred and twenty-five piece of capacity, so it's not going to be a large capacity building. So I've been working really closely with Michael Belt, who's been the architect individual. And he's helped me a lot to get everything dialed up and make sure that our site plan is appropriate. I also have from Northland Associates here that we did plorings on the whole property, all along there. And that's when we came up with our water retention areas. And that should accommodate the problem that Mr. Brett had with us, with the watering going towards the backside of the property. So we've cured that problem, I'm pretty sure, but here's actually a recording for that, so you'll be able to see the actual drawings, where we actually did our retention down.
I think we have that. Yeah, that's, that one is in our packet.
It's in the packet. And we've tried to accommodate with everyone, with everyone had to comment, has any of... Without opposing any of our situations. You asked us to address the water retention program, we did. We reduced it for our noise application, but we will have two hundred people at that barn, it will be down to a hundred and twenty-five. We'll shut down at eleven o'clock and I will be there to monitor it each and every event we're going to have. Also, I mentioned that this facility is going to work with FFA, also 4H, where else we want to work with the schools, daycare centers, we've already have two daycare centers if we're able to have this building. And we're going to have a small little petting zoo or animal farm. And these kids will be able to come to this facility free. We're going to open it up to daycare, also from kindergarten up to about third grade. That'll be able to come and have kind of a, oh, I don't know what you want to call it, but just kind of a day camp type thing. Where they'll be able to come for a couple, three hours and we're going to have them come visit the animals, explain to them, a lesson type period where... So some of these kids, which believe it or not, there's a lot of kids in our world now that are three and four or five years old that don't even know what a cow looks like, unless it's in a book or it's on a computer. So we're going to try to do educational things there also, so. But we're willing to work with the board and we're here to do things the right way because we don't want to throw any surprises. We never meant to throw any surprises to any of our neighbors. I did go talk to Steve, in fact, when I did speak to him, my granddaughter sold him some point sevens. And this was for Chris around December. He did go talk to my estimator, which was in October, when we started clearing the land. And he explained to him that Mike was building a wedding barn, a pasture. He said, Mike, and I, I know Golden and all the fell, hard in to build this. He tells you to put a drive, he said stuff like that. So when I did go to him in December, he was made aware that this is what we're going to be doing. And I asked him even if you'd be interested in doing work inside the barn, because I knew he was a carpenter, a trade. He said, no, I don't want to mess with it. But he did then snuck me for making that berman there. Also to help the noise situation for him, I did leave around between fifty and sixty feet of woods, trees, brush, briar, things like that. And the noise act to, to him and keep the building back from his home more, move the building over where it's my place more. So I'm, I'm trying really hard to work with the neighbors, I don't want to make anybody mad at me. I just want to have, this will be my last and final venture. And so I thought it'd be kind of neat, the whole township have a beautiful facility like this.
All right, okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, now we've heard some of the things there, why don't we go ahead and have a, we'll open up a comment section right now, so.
Can the board talk for a second before we do that?
That's fine.
Okay. So I was not at the last meeting, so I'm just wondering what you guys talked about as far as it's, the township does not define anywhere in the zoning ordinance what an active agricultural operation would be. So how, how was it determined that this would meet the criteria? Because the area of property for the wedding barn is three point zero nine acres of the five acre parcel. So over half is for the commercial operation and not for the agriculture. Which if you don't have it defined in your zoning ordinance, then it's supposed to be at least fifty-one percent agricultural, ongoing operation. It's not, it's not just something that you can say, we're going to be agriculture. It can't be that the adjacent parcel is agricultural. So what was your thinking in that about why this would qualify to be under that agricultural exemption?
My thinking was that the parcel would need to be combined.
That's my thinking too.
Which didn't really, we didn't, well, I want to say come to a definitive agreement on that maybe.
Okay.
But that was my thought of how number, between how number nine and ten read.
Right.
Because it says principal residence and, and then...
Can I answer a little bit of that question? Earlier, when Jeffrey Hart was here as a supervisor, we spoke with Jeffrey and the situation. And he actually said, hey, if you're always going to the agricultural zoning, then we can actually use this, put this barn up there. If we didn't know that situation, we would have had to combine those two parcels together, both fives to make it a ten. But with it just being five, we had to have at least five acres to put this building on. And he said, if you don't have a building on it right now, then we can be all right with that because you'll have a building right now and that. Otherwise, you had to have a building on that property for a five-year period. And that's what Jeffrey told me, he said, but we can let that dot go that way, so. That's one of the things that was amended or the prior.
Now, this was rezoned to agricultural, well, are special events venues, they're okay in R1 or not? They, they're only... So we rezoned it to agricultural, not because it's an agricultural operation, because they needed agricultural zoning to even consider a special events venue.
Correct.
Yes. And so just because we rezoned it to agricultural does not mean the use is agricultural. And in the special events venue section, it does say that it has to be part of the principal parcel unless it's agricultural, ongoing agricultural operations, which it doesn't appear this will be, appears this will be agricultural.
At least five acres.
Correct.
If you have a two acre, that's active agricultural, it wouldn't be allowed.
Right.
It'd need to be five acres of active agricultural.
And this parcel is only five acres and three acres are going to be used for parking and the structures and the, the drainage and the sidewalks and driveways and things like that. So that only leaves two acres of this five acre parcel for e- even if they wanted to have agricultural use, which is way less than half the parcel.
That would be correct, that's taking away from, and I don't, like I explained to him, that's what I don't have any against what they want to do.
No, it's beautiful, it's amazing.
I think bars to be combined.
And you do.
Another reason is, is I think, you know, even though it doesn't clearly state that when, when we put this special events venue in here, the intention basically was to put old farm barns to use.
Correct, yes.
That's why, that's why the five-year thing and stuff is in there.
Right.
Because that was the intention, is when you have twenty acres, you've got a pasture out there and you've got an old barn that you could utilize that old barn. I don't have a problem with building new structure, but I still think it needs to be combined with a pair of parcels myself because not only does it say it, but everything is that keeps, like Steve's note says, keeps from selling off that building on its own later down the road. And now that's strictly commercial use, which is just way outside of the intent of having a wedding event venue at your residence.
Can I address that question for you that Justin, and I agree with what you're saying. And I, I've seen that in the notes that you may think that we're going to build a big, beautiful facility and sell that barn.
I'm thinking, but you don't know what's going to happen tomorrow and neither do we.
Right.
So do anything we can to protect the township.
Right, so what I'm saying is, the special use permit, if we could do a contingent that it belongs to be able to stay in my ownership. If I do sell that barn and that five acres, then it has to be a contingency, possibly put a contingency in there that the new owners if do purchase that barn, if they do, which I don't know what could happen in the future, nobody does. But they have to then come back to the... But they have to then come back to the board for a special use permit in their name.
I don't think our zoning permits that unfortunately.
Who's going to monitor that? I mean, we don't have people to monitor that.
They'll have to, they'll have to come to the board. Contingency situation. To join, to join those two pieces of property.
We wouldn't even know it was sold. I mean, we, we, we wouldn't even know it was sold. We don't have, the township doesn't have the...
Well, they wouldn't have a special use permit if they didn't.
They'd just use yours.
No, they could not because it would be a contingency.
Well, we would never know though. The township, once you get a special use, we don't go back and, and look ever unless there's a complaint. Somebody would have to tell us that there's a new owner of this. We would never know otherwise.
But what Jeffrey was telling me in the situation when we first started this situation is, can we join them? Basically, they're not, how do you explain it? It's, they're not joined, but they're in together, basically. They're not together, but they're, you know what I'm saying? There's two parcels here. Those two parcels are a section of our property. I also have another piece of property, it's five acres, and that has a parcel number. Those two parts, pieces of our property actually butt up to each other. That being butt up to each other, that's what we consider, okay, they're both agricultural. And when you mentioned, we have to have a lot of it still being agricultural use. And our parking lot got bigger than we thought. We weren't planning on this water retention program. That took up a lot more of the land. But we are going to have farm animals on that. We are going to have learning positions and places and stuff for young children to come over. So it's not going to be this, we're just going to go, we're offering this to the schools and daycare center for free. There'll be no charge for any school anywhere, I promise, to come to this facility, learn about animals and horses and cows and pigs and chicken. But we have to have some kind of revenue to make payments on that kind of a facility. And so my wife and I thought together, because I've always had a dream of children with the riding stable I had. I had many, 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 many thousands of children through Michigan Trails, Michigan Dudes, came for their mare patches with me. And had, had periods of riding in the horseback. So I did teaching for a long, long time there, and my wife says, you're great at it. Why don't you continue on? I said, fine, but how are we going to make a payment through this barn?
Right. We have, we have, we believe in ten. What we have to have is, is something concrete. So I think what we have to discuss here is, let us have our moments here, kind of as our, as our group here. Stephen, you said the planning commission should consider a mechanism that would prevent this from continuing. Is there anything that, that is a suggestion as to how that would possibly?
I, I don't know if there's a solid one that would be legally enforceable other than ultimately containing. You could say that if, you know... The main issue is if it's sold up as a separate parcel, you then have this event center that doesn't comply with the requirements of the ordinance. You also have an accessory building without a principal residence. So you're creating a non, potentially creating a non-conformity, or a backdoor to a non-conformity.
But I don't think it meets the standards of an agricultural use. That's the only exemption they get from combining parcels is if it's an agricultural use. And this does not meet the criteria. It's a commercial venture that will have a side of, of agriculture. It's not the main use of the building.
What happens when they, now the parcel's bigger now, it's not five acres anymore, it's ten acres. Does that still take up more than?
If they combined everything?
Yeah, they combine the property, then it's...
I think that's the intent.
If they combine the property, then there's no problem at all. It doesn't even have to be an agricultural use. If the special events venue is on the principal resident parcel, then it's totally fine, as long as it's five acres. And, and so he just, he either has to combine the, the parcels or, or it has to be a fifty-one percent agriculture on that specific parcel, not on his principal parcel, on that parcel. And there's not enough room for that. By the time you take the three acres for this venue, you're only leaving two acres left. If he wants to make a pasture for his horses, it's not enough to be a principal agricultural use, which is how you get the exemption in the ordinance. I don't know if Dave wants to open the comments.
I don't have to build it. Active agricultural use on my whole side, I didn't fit that exemption, and nobody offered that to me at the time.
We can take all that till next week. We might screw up.
You make a good point. It's, it's hard.
I want to get this.
On the property, what I was on it with the engineer, there's a good share of this property that's actually his growing crops. He's growing white grass, because he has a site on the hill out there. About two-thirds of that property has been planted. And if you look where it says grass on here, that's an area that he is going to be farming and harvesting for his, for his cattle. Also, the petting zoo is under his... There'll be animals all over this site. Bunny rides are going to be developed.
That's not a site plan.
And so that's kind of thing. So it isn't all just two acres of... Then the fence back there, two things put up under property, give the apples under property. So if it has been an empty for, for agricultural use, you don't, you can see the fence back there.
So I think, I think the issue we have is if we combine the two parcels, it becomes, there's no question. And you have, what, what you're looking to do is there. I think that's the best way to go around this without having to redo your site plan to show all the additional things where you would have agricultural, fifty-one percent of that.
Also, I can mention the last meeting we had, that you were here. There is overflow parking starting with mapping on the main property, and it was approved to allow that to happen. And we have to have fifty parking spots on, on the site. Overflow parking already is on the, the, the site there. So there aren't any big use in conjunction with each other, although they're not even a fence between the two, they're pretty much open to each other. It seems like a formality.
I understand that, but it's still a separate parcel.
Which is still allowed to be sold separately.
If I was to combine those parcels, Jesse, you know as well as I do, I couldn't afford those taxes from the township on ten acres, if one of them be in three quarters of a million dollar barn and facility. I mean, you guys know that as well as I do. There's, what would the tax base be on something like that? I honestly don't. It'd be a lot, you know? That's one of the biggest reasons why I needed to kind of say, okay, let's do this five acres. Give this five acres. I've done nothing with that five acre for forty years. I've owned that for forty years. So I said, let's build the barn. And we built the barn. And if we had had a barn on that five years ago, we wouldn't even be here talking because it's already approved. But if I build a barn on it now, then in five years, it would actually fall under the same ruling that it would have fallen in today. Because there would have been a barn on it for five years.
Well, if you had a barn five years ago, you still would need a special use for, special events venue, and you'd run into the exact same thing. It has to be combined with your principal parcel. That's, it's in the ordinance. It sounds to me like the issue is, is completely that. And, and if you want us to look at the ordinance and try to, then we could delay it another few months, but it takes a while to change the ordinance. That's, that's the sticking point, is that special events venues are allowed in agricultural, but they must be on the principal parcel of the resident of the operator. That's just right in the zoning.
Well, because we're not, in fact, one word, one to bring up earlier, didn't get a chance to, we, we're not going to be building a barn this year. We've had to, they're taking longer than I thought for miss and getting everything set in order. The main contractor that had was going to build this, he was, he had an open slot in April to build this for me. I had to call him up and say, I'm sorry, but, you know, take my deposit. I cannot say that you'll be in there in April. I don't want to even say you'll be in here in April. So that being said, the next venue area of time I would get to have them build this again would be sometime in October. But if it is, but it won't be anything happening this summer, and it won't be a wedding venue this year or a school classroom thing, it'll be probably till next summer, sometime spring. But we're actually going to hold this program off now till probably close to October, if everything still works.
Would you consider the combination of the two parcels?
What two parcel? My home parcel?
Yeah.
And I guess I don't really have two things that would kind of bice me with having something like that. One, I was going to self-fund this barn. But finding that the barn is costing more than my funds I got, I'm going to have to go to the bank. So the bank's going to look and say, okay, what are you putting up for collateral? Well, I want to put up the five acres with the barn. I don't want to put up my house. I don't want to lose my house. If something were to happen, I die tomorrow. My wife couldn't operate the barn. She, she can't afford the payments on the barn. I lose my house. She loses her home.
That's the risk you take in business.
Well, yeah. Brett, Jesse knows as well as I do, you know, why, why risk your home with something like that when we can do five acres parcel with a barn? You know, really, come on. And that's all I'm trying to do is protect interests later on in life. I'm just trying to make sure that we don't lose our home over this venture. It's a risky business. Any business you get into, you know, Jesse. You can lose your butt one minute and make a fortune the next.
We all know.
Right. So, and I'm just trying to say, look, this is five acres. We're going to keep it agriculture. We're not going to make no condominiums out of it. We're not going to make a big apartment building. We're not doing any of that. It's going to be family owned. And I've owned that property for forty years, so it's not some guy coming off the street saying, hey, well, five acres, and we'll build this big barn, and that's it. I'm not doing that. That's not my intent. We're just going to make money.
Well, the problem is that this is a commercial business. Any way you stack it, this is a commercial business that we're trying to pigeonhole with our ordinances into an agricultural parcel. But, so the one way to do that is to combine it with your lot, and then that's no question at all. Otherwise, what you're doing is you're leaving, you're having what's a vacant parcel now running a commercial building or a commercial business on it in an agricultural district, not in a commercial district. So that's the risk that we're taking if we approve it. We're not, we're not really approving it correctly as a special events venue if it's not primarily for agricultural. If it's a vacant parcel, it has to be agriculture. This is a wedding venue with a side of agriculture. I mean...
What do you consider adjoining? I mean, adjoining because they, they butt up to each other?
No, it has to be combined. Like in, in, in Muskegon County GIS, it has to be one parcel. It would have no split. It would be owned under this, it would be listed under your address. It would be your adjacent parcel.
Two things that's going to happen with that. My land tax, my taxes on my home is going to go...
But you're building a commercial business, so I mean, you're going to anyway.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about my home loan, mortgage going to have. You know, it'll go from a thousand dollars to probably two thousand dollars a month because the taxes are going to be so high. All I'm trying to do is operate a situation where children can come learn about what's going on. But we can have a wedding venue. It's going to be controlled, teaching them a lot of crazy parts.
I think it's a great idea. We just need to, we need to somehow figure out how you'd want it to be. We need to conform with the ordinances that are on the books. We have no choice in that matter. Pardon me?
You might need to redo an ordinance change.
Yeah, yes. I mean, we could if, if the planning commission thinks we should, but we've already approved other special events venues and required them to have their, their principal residence on the parcel of the special events venue.
Right, but it would be a move horses and things, they're like going that orders.
There's no saying we actually be able to change it. It's got to go through us, through the board, public hearings.
I have a question regarding the ordinance.
There are bans everywhere, and I can't hear what you guys are saying. That'd be a question for Steve, but I don't think so. Yeah, no.
See, our, our decision is, we are trying to pass this using what's in the books tonight. And doing so, you have to have nine and ten. We can't go around nine and ten without making it an ordinance.
What were you trying to say, Doug?
Oh, they slid in.
Three things against it. That's not in the same property, that it's not an active agricultural use, and that the building has been in existence for five years. And being constructed for the sole purpose of being a, right?
We changed that though, didn't we?
We did.
In twenty twenty, the five-year thing is on, right? I think that's in our packet. The ordinance is there and it's crossed off with what it used to be. And that, so there's really only two sticking points, I think. Yeah, that is...
Sorry? What is it, what is it, what's, does it, what, right? Do you have the five acres something that you put on it?
Right on the side of one of these.
I have a note. I'm going to bring you some, give you a question. Did I, did I?
Oh, it's right here. It's on, um, it's on, yeah, it's on its own sheet. It's right here. It says number ten is right. It's all crossed off, and then it says ordinance, twenty twenty, August of twenty twenty-three, it was changed. We took out the five acres. Yes, our changes are on.
The other one, but the agricultural.
You don't need to worry about the five acres.
It would be five acres. Just giving up that. The house is R1. The house can be at five acres.
It is gone five acres. Just, it's, since it's presently zoned agricultural.
And that is now one of the three things that we just mentioned there, so that does come up, but the other two still exist.
Mm-hmm.
But that is where, as it, as it exists today, that's the nine and ten. I don't see...
And the funny thing is, we can all sit up here and think, this is amazing, and this would be great for the township. But we just cannot get around the ordinances that are in the, on the books. That's, it's our job to know what's in the book and to make sure that what's in the book is followed. And even though it's painful sometimes, or change the book, yeah.
For an ordinance change, that we can have the five acres with that barn and, and wedding barn. And, and I, I mean, it's still going to be, there's going to be farm animals on it. I could turn out my horses right now on it right now. Like, I could turn out four or five horses, and then it's all going to be grazing right now. There's a fence on it right now that took down parcel fences, and there's still parts back on the woods area. That was all my grazing land. And Stephen's right, that was my backyard for many years, for probably thirty years. I had removed the hook, the fence, I removed the fence in the summer so that we could get back in there and do some work.
So on this site plan in here, there's the, the proposed bridal suite. So right now, I think the fence is, or the, the area that you're calling agriculture is back here. Do you see like animals up in here grazing right next to these grines?
You see there's a petting zoo right there?
Right.
That petting zoo is actually going to be a facility for miniature horses. I bought it, I've just received this kind of new, this is the Herford branch, the Herford bull. We'll have miniature goats in there, miniature rabbits in there, like chickens and dogs and cats and every kind of farm animal that can be established at a farm is what will be having there.
But overall, that's a very small area. It's only five hundred and seventy-six square feet. So it wouldn't get you to your goal of being a fifty-one percent operation here. You would, you would, and I just don't see a way that the animals could get up here by the buildings or that you could actually plant crops or do farming right up in these buildings.
Up in space. It's all pretty space. Build here.
It just, it has to be reasonable though that you would want to get baling machines and stuff up by this like million dollar building. I mean...
But rug gardens out there, certain kinds of, of landscape.
Yes, but also... So let's just, let's just recognize that the courts are very, very well-versed at people having agricultural operations to hide a commercial building. So we want to make sure that's not taking place here because the township cannot afford any lawsuits or any court, anything.
Just curious.
No. I can, I can read though. I can read legal briefs.
We've had four meetings with Steve, and we talked about it at the very first meeting about this plan of this property. There was a spot in the ordinance, can we find one, Stephen? You said at one point, define what agricultural use was. It's up to your permission to make that decision, whether it's compatible or not. Who the board had that decision to make? If we hadn't known it four weeks ago, five weeks ago, this was going to be an obstacle, we could have gone and tried to take the simple combination or take the other avenue. We've spent hours and hours, hardship on this, we pay all this money, these years. And now you're, now there's another hardship above the property. It just seems like we're not really getting the help and assistance that you offer. I thought the board here was, and the planning was here to help make this project happen. It sounds like it's not going anywhere because...
Combine the parcels, they can happen without us saying anything.
Do anybody for anything, I know that. But to make a case out of it right now before you make a decision?
Well, I'm just not willing to put myself on the line for this. Like, I want to follow the ordinance. I'm not going to...
Never repeat, I got it.
Can I ask for a ten-year tax exemption then?
I, I don't know. That's something you can investigate. I'm not really sure.
Right.
You could go to the county. I'm not sure.
I'm dealing with the county, trying to get through with the county's heart. Because I mean, I've had soil erosion, I went through, got vet permit, I've got all the permits that they all asked me to do. I've got the septic tank, I've got the well permit, I've got the, the permit, and I spent thousands of dollars to get the water retention program settled and taken care of. Now I've tried to follow every rule that we all had. Now, I've tried to follow every rule that we all had, we all addressed it. And I was told by, by the supervisor of the government here, when Jeffrey and I, I approached him and said, hey, can we make this happen? He said, well, Mike, he says, you should have been a barn on that in five years. But I think without that happening, we could still make this happen. You can still operate a barn, wedding barn from that. It's still going to have farm animals on it. We've always stated it will be farm animals on it. It's going to be a learning center also, not just a wedding venue. It'll be a learning center.
The, the problem also on this print right here that you've given us with, it said, here is the special events ordinance. It's printed right from our book. And on number nine, it says, the special events venue shall be located on the property which contains the principal residence of the operator or which is put to active agricultural use. And on the side, you guys wrote complies as adjacent use. But that doesn't comply. You, you have to be the same. That parcel has to be in agricultural use. You can't use the adjacent parcel. That would be like saying if your neighbor has a farm that you could qualify. It has to be the same parcel, not an adjacent parcel. So, I mean, right away, you guys knew that you didn't qualify for that part of the ordinance. It's because you wrote on it.
Very first meeting, that was the first meeting we talked about the, the property. It remains at the surface, but I do remember the conversation. Advised we, right, we need to be considered an active agricultural use. Exactly. It's very, it will be active right now, and will be that. That's the point. Because it's a, 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 or it's a, it's fifty-one percent.
That's just what the court of Michigan said in other states.
That was a rule.
We, right, when it's not, it's not defined in our ordinance. And when it's not defined in our ordinance, it goes to, it goes to what the state defines as it, because we didn't define it. So, I mean, we can try to define it, I don't know, but you'd also have to change the ordinance to define what that is, because it's not defined in our ordinance.
I've never read the ordinance. I've never read the ordinance, and I had to make it fifty-one percent agricultural.
Well, who's to say what an active agricultural use is? That's the sticking point.
Hip them all day long. I mean, I, I, I mean, yeah, you're right. Courts can do and hip everything. And I'm here in front of the township board. I'm here to put a proposal on the table. It's going to be a, a decent facility. It's not going to be, you know, you understand that, right?
Yeah, we understand that word.
To enjoy my two properties, you guys have to understand also, I would not be able to operate that facility. I would not be able to afford that facility. I'm giving children a way to learn free. I don't charge them nothing. All the schools in any county can come.
Have you checked with the county to see what they're going to assess your vacant parcel as with this on it?
No, I haven't. I haven't even known it. I wouldn't even get it passed. I'm down with the county and getting all these permits.
Because your taxes are going to go up. You're, you're improving the real property.
Specifically, I'm only aware that my taxes will go up on that five acres with the barn. But I'm not prepared to be able to afford ten acres with a good home, ranch, other barns, other facilities, another five acres with another barn that's worth, you know, three, four hundred thousand dollars. I don't think anybody in the township could afford those taxes. I argued with them years ago when I had a riding stable there, and they wanted me to zone a commercial. I said, there's no way. I had fifty-six acres here in this community. And they said, okay, you know what? Let's run it under recreational agriculture. And we ran it at that. And it was no problem. You never had any problems with it at all. We're still keeping it agriculture. We're not going to change anything. Then they make it a, a city street. It's going to be agricultural. Farm animals will be there. It might not be fifty-one percent, but how are they going to define it? The court's going to come and say, you're forty-nine and a half percent, not fifty-one. And I'd say, you know what? Let me throw a couple more towels up here.
I guess. I mean, is that, that's one thing I want to know. Like, it doesn't say that fifty percent thing in our book.
Correct. It's like, it's not defined.
Is it defined by state law? Like, is it actual a number in the law?
There is, there is, there have been state precedents, court cases that has decided, but no, I don't.
That's a judge saying that, though? Not, not.
Yes, correct. I don't know that the state defines it either.
Okay.
Well, I mean.
That's right. I'm, I just want to get that clear. There's another thing too.
You'll get it back.
I don't, we do. I, I stayed up till midnight last night thinking of everything that I could do to make it things right. And you know, I don't want to do anything that's against the law. I never have tried, but I'm trying to do things right. Well, you, as you can see, I've spent a thousand dollars on making all the permits proper. Taking care of water retention program, taking care of the noise.
Even on the, on the fifty-one percent, are we, is that something we need to abide by? Is that fifty-one percent? Or is it something we could in the, in this, to get past that, I guess they have one particular hangup. If we said that we recognized it as agriculture because of the petting zoo, would that be something that we could say that we recognize it that way?
You could offer that as a justification for your determination that it's agricultural use, if you, if you only find to do so. But, or to consider it as active agricultural use. The only issue of that is it's not a commonly recognized standard to go by.
Also, I'm a.
I think to make everything really simple, Mike, we just combine the parts.
Yeah, please, just to buy.
Simple, and, and I understand it's going to be more taxes. I, I understand that. But, one thing I do want to point out is, I mean, last month, you wanted us to approve an eighty by hundred building, and gave us a site plan, so this is what we're building.
Right.
And we want this approved. In this month, now it's sixty bay building, and it's different parking lot, and it's different retention system. We're still not showing the septic system. I just don't feel it's, it's ready, I guess, because it went, I mean, this is night and day. When I was here last month, last month, why weren't you approved it? Well, why is this, why is it this?
Because.
I hear a lot of. I want to, I want to have opportunity to correct some mistakes that I'm hearing on the sport.
Let, let him, okay, okay. Where I'm going with this anyways, is like I said last month, even I love the idea. I think it's great. But we're trying to, we're trying to do the best to give this, and, you know, I'm pro-business guy. I, I, I don't want to tell, I'm not trying to shut you down, but at the same point, we have jobs. Check you, check residents, check township. We're trying to blend all this together, right? And that makes it so much easier and cleaner for us if it's combined parcels. And we don't care about the tax revenue, but it does make it a lot cleaner.
It does make it a lot cleaner. That's a problem. You don't care about the tax revenue.
No, I shouldn't say I don't care about the tax revenue.
Just so, so little goes on township anyway.
Right. I, that's what I'm saying is I don't care about, I'm not saying that I want you to combine the parcels so that don't, it's more tax dollars. That's, that's what happens. But you're part, but that's part of why.
At the same time, you can get paid more taxes no matter what.
I don't want to be paid more tax, and I'm willing.
See, I think also, that's the thing though, too, like, I, I love it. I, but like we, like you just said, we have to blend this all together. Um, assessing on all that stuff is paying the rear end anyway, but how do you know how much, is it going to, do you know it's going to be more if you're doing it together or, because you still have a commercial building? Is it going to be, are they going to, are they going to assess it as a commercial building and charge you more for this five acres? And then if you just combine it all together with your principal residence?
I think the way it's going to go, um, and we're going to have just a one. With, with taxes and stuff, and I've been in real estate in the past, though, with rental homes, we used to have rental homes. And every time I put a different porch on, or I did, I put a roof on, or anything like that, the assessment person was there, and they boom, raise the taxes, boom, raise the taxes.
Oh, that's.
With this being a join, what's going to happen is they're going to look at the tax assessor, he's going to come to my house. They're going to say, well, now that we got ten acres, we're going to be accessible again. And we're going to have another accessible barn. And, you know, anything like this, it's automatically going to make the taxes go way higher, way higher. And with your, as your guys is, when I did come to you with that larger building, um, I wasn't figuring out a water retention program, that I had big, all the water stay right on the property. With having that come about, I actually had to then look at it and say, in opposition from the noise, opposition from uh, of water being possibly going on some other property. I said, okay. We got to back this up a little bit. So we revised the plan. We looked at it and said, let's, let's not go sixty or eighty by hundred. Let's, let's do something that's neighborly offense for everyone. Move the barn back a little bit so it won't offend Stephen, the noise. We're insulated with special styrofoam. It's going to make the sound almost zero. And, and we're going to then be able to take the water retention program, the parking area that we need, and all the things we kind of do to make it feasible for the township.
The, the thing that hangs up in this is something here that what would stop down the road from that being sold separately? We have two pieces of property, and now what we've approved is not two separate entities. It's your, both of yours. So the really, the, the ordinance was written so that it is all in one. And that's kind of, that's, that's the solution. And I, and I think that's the concern is we open up, you got to have to understand what we're saying. We're opening it up to where anybody could do something. And I'm not saying you have an ill intent or anything like that. It's just, we could have somebody down the road do this and say, well, listen, you did it here. Because we didn't follow our own ordinance, and that's our, our predicament is we are kind of in this. And like I said, I, I hate to tell you, the best option is probably going to be more expensive for you, but the best one is I, I, I mean, we don't know that for sure. Possibly, we don't really know. But if you combine the two, you take all of those reasons that we would have to say it doesn't, it doesn't conform to saying it does conform. And then it's, uh, again, your, your drawings, everything else, everything else goes forward. It just has to be, it has to be joined.
But in all likelihood, your bylaws and your ordinances and everything states in there that it can be a five acre, it has to be a five acres. It has to be that much. It has to have a barn on it. And if it had a barn, it could be okay in five years.
No, that's not in the ordinance anymore. That was changed in twenty twenty-three.
Or it changed in twenty twenty-three. I must not have. We could ask the tax assessor here in the Dalton Township. Well, we have five acres in the house. What would taxes be on five acres or ten acres with a house and a, a barn that's worth three hundred thousand dollars?
It'd probably be less because you're getting homestead exemption for the whole parcel.
Yeah, but homestead only goes so far. Homestead tax only goes so far.
You don't have to pay school operating or school debt if that's the biggest part of your taxes.
Right. But that's, this is where we, again, that, we're not here to rewrite them. That nine and ten definitely hang up front. We can't move forward. His, his question was if he combined the property, so that it would be something that would be able to be approved.
We probably could have approved it an hour and a half ago. That's the only sticking point is that, that it's not following the ordinance.
It moves you forward. It's, again, to go through all the other steps we were talking about, to rewrite the, the book or put something else in there, that's a process. And I can tell you, we are, we've said before, we're going to put one, if we put one thing in, we got to take two things out somewhere else. We don't want to keep this thing growing. And again, we're trying to make it so it's readable and functioning. And this is unfortunately, when we, we've got to this point where we are in a corner for you. And it's just really the way to get out of it is to combine those two parcels. And then you're, then you're in a position where, again, I do the research on the taxes. That's a real concern for you. Tell them, here's what I'm proposing. They'll do the same thing there that we did for you here. Is they'll give you the best estimate as to what they can say. This is what it would be.
Okay, I, I like your suggestion. I, I can live with that. I mean, could we table this then to next meeting? And I could research the following and find out, okay, what's it going to take for taxes moving forward? Dalton Township, is actually going to receive a good sign of something change.
That's not how we operate. I, I want to tell you, I had that, that's not my, this is my, not my day job.
No, I know.
I'm here right now trying to put together what we can. And, and we don't want to go around going, I don't want to be like a picture Robin Hood, and you were going around saying, you know.
That's not our, our. If I go to the county or get assessed, I can get a statement from the assessor. If I, maybe Steve can help me to point me the right direction on that, who I can speak with. If we do this assessment on that facility, um, and then with the two parts being combined, well, my tax base would be there with homestead, as you said, or if we could just do, um, I guess my proposal would be, I could look at the tax situation between the two counts about the parcel being combined. I'll look at what it would take for five acres in that building on tax. So I know where it's combined and what it's separate. And then if it's separate, maybe we could then look at rewriting the ordinances so it would help myself and it would help possibly help Kevin.
The problem with rewriting the ordinance is if we took that one line out, we'd have to probably add like fifteen lines in to talk about what future, happens in the future, like we were going to have to do with this. And typically, this board is of the opinion that we're trying to make it simpler and not make it harder, and that would make it way harder.
I think whatever biggest hangups came in with this fifty-one percent agriculture, there's no law saying it has to be fifty-one percent.
No, it's just defined. It's, it's just a definition. It's not a law. You're right.
I took a look at it, um, as similar, like another area of our ordinances that discuss agricultural stuff. Just to kind of see if there's something else in the ordinances that would help us define from something that's already established. And in sixteen twelve, uh, agricultural service establishment, it says, the definition is, now this is for agricultural service establishment, but it just gives us a idea into what agricultural could be looked at. And that's establishments primarily engaged in supplying soil preparation services, crop services, landscaping, agricultural services, veterinary, and other animal services and farm labor management services. So it's not like a one for one there, but, um.
Whenever you use the word primarily, that means over fifty-one percent. That's the main. It's the primary.
I guess I'm, I'm willing to be creative with what we call agricultural, but, you know, that's my opinion. And that's, uh, yeah, so everybody's got to be in agreement. And it, it's not an objective way of looking at what we're going to call agriculture, so.
Yes, yeah, the only other hangup would be, I think, in our current ordinance, you can't put a building on a vacant piece of land without a primary residence.
Or it's going to be used for other purposes.
If you were building a barn that had stalls for animals, yes. But this is not. This is a commercial building, so.
I have, I have known people that's tried to beat their way around the bush. I decided to go straight up with the board and not. I could have built a barn back there. I wouldn't have been sitting in these meetings and, and hired all these architects and, and hired all the people. I could have done that, but I didn't build that which way. I could have built a barn and said, okay, I'm going to make it a, a, a riding arena. Then I said, ah, you know what? I won't be doing that. Now I want to turn it into a, a wedding day.
You still have to get a special use permit for any special events venue.
Already have a building on that building.
It's not really about the building. It's about the operation. That's what you're getting for it.
I'm trying to be upfront. I'm trying to be upfront, do the right thing. So that's what I'm saying. I'm here and I've spent thousands of dollars. What you guys have asked me to do. And then at the last minute, I'm thinking we're going to come in here and get resolution to this whole situation. Come up and start talking fifty-one percent has to be agriculture.
Well, that's not defined.
The ordinance is saying it has to be fifty-one percent.
The reason we're sitting here is because it's not, because you're not, it's not on the primary parcel of the operator, which is what is in the ordinance.
It still would hang us up on those two, the nine and ten would still be in, uh, those two particular things have to be. We have to find a way to, to work with it. Otherwise, we had to come up with a mechanism. Is the word that we're trying to come up with is, is a way to do this otherwise. And it's really not a way to do that if it's not a primary residence.
Okay, let's do this. This should keep you guys out of the courtroom. Keep you guys safe, which your decisions will be. We'll make the combination of both parcels. It'll be ten acres with my home and that new barn. Did that take care of the resolution? Which I had be combined.
And going with this site, this site plan?
They will approve the site plan, and this, approve my site plan, and the special use permit. That would do everything that you guys have asked me to do.
Does it matter that the parcel numbers are incorrect? Does that, they're, they're, and they're different all through these documents? There, it depends on where you look, what, what the parcel numbers are.
Combined the parcels after the application was made.
Okay.
So the application was made with those two initial, two and a half acre parcels.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah, they're combined into one part.
During the process, they were combined into one.
Okay.
If I understand what you're asking is, if, if you went ahead and did that, is this going to meet all of our criteria that we would need to make a decision on that? I would be, I don't want to overstate, but I wa, I would feel more comfortable if we had more of a consensus that this would be something we would look at. For me, again, this is a big move to make. I guess I understand what the combining. Like I said, I understand what the combining of two plans, if we did that. He does that.
Can I ask a question?
We never opened it up.
This is a question. This gentleman just said, you asked, are those the latest drawings? And you said, we hope so. So we're going to approve this gentleman's whole project on a maybe? This gentleman followed all the rules. He has some benches in the woods, right? This is a commercial building with a commercial parking lot going into an agricultural lot next to a house that's going to lose a lot of value because now there's a venue next door. Sitting on his front deck, you can watch the waves in the outside part. The new map that he got a picture of from here says outdoor wedding area. It says outdoor wedding gazebo. The gazebo is from his deck, he can see it. The outdoor wedding area is not going to have cows and sheep and horses running around all of it. It's going to have grass so people can be in the outdoor wedding area. If this is the actual final version, why don't we have an actual final version? Nobody said, Mike, why don't you go clear the whole property this summer quick? Get everything done, fill it in, take out all the trees, everything else, and then ask permission of this, this board. This board was on here before you started this stuff. You asked somebody three years ago that's no longer here. This gentleman's required to follow the rules. You are not, you are asking for all the ordinances to change.
But write your comments to the board if you would. That, that really helps. So, so to answer, to answer your questions on this, we have been following, this has been a very active process that we've been going through. This has not been something we've taken very lightly and what have you. And given the takes, we're trying to get this there. Our book allows us to say yes on certain things. There's things that they have to follow 100%. If that were to be where the properties were joined, it would meet the criteria to do what he's asking to do.
Well, he may be.
We didn't ask him to do that. We, he knows the rules when he talks to Steve, that it had to be combined.
But it does, it does meet our, it does meet the criteria for what would be allowed on the property. If he puts it on his home, if he combines the two properties, it then becomes a different conversation than we're having tonight.
Right.
And then the neighbor two doors down is not happy about it. Maybe kitty corner came over and talked to us, he's not happy about it. So no, not all the neighbors are thinking it's a great thing. So neighbor way down the road are, because they think it's cool, we should have a new venue. Yes, a new venue would be great. A new venue in a commercial area would be great. Making a commercial building and putting it next to houses where people, Steve built that house. This is his retirement home. He's now going to have a commercial building, cars coming in and out. Car's not leaving till 11 o'clock at night, lights going everywhere. It's got two lights, light poles on the property. Where are those lights going to shine into?
Down. They're required by the ordinance to shine down.
And so he won't be able to see us from his property.
He shouldn't, no, not if they're correctly positioned. They're supposed to be shining onto the parcel. They should be at the, it, it's, it's best if you put them at the edge of the parcel, facing in towards the parcel and reflecting towards the parcel that it's lighting up.
You tell them the drawing.
And unfortunately, I know this is very hard for people to realize, but planning commissions are not allowed to take opposition. You can't just say, I don't like this, I don't want this. We have to provide substantial factual evidence that, that if we approve this, that it's going to actually be harmful. We can't just think it's going to, we can't just, somebody can't just tell us, I think it's going to. We actually have to have real facts to back up. If we were to deny this, if he combines the parcels, he meets the, every part of the ordinance. And, and we can't just deny it because people don't like it. We have to have a reason to deny it. Something that's factual, that actually we can say is going to happen from this parcel. There, there just isn't any evidence of, of, of a lot of things. Like, we don't, the noise, they're going to control the noise, there's a noise ordinance. So we can find him in violation of his special use permit if things don't pan out the way that he says they're going to be. But we can't deny it based on the fact that he might break his special use permit. A part of the fact about being on a planning commission.
Right, right, right. Let's say it's time to mow the lawn on Saturday and we're looking at a wedding next door. Okay, what are we going to do? Mow the lawns or do we not mow our lawns?
I would mow my lawn. And if he doesn't like it, he will put up something, he will make plants, he will put vegetation up to, yeah, to, he will deal with the consequences of that.
I've already done that. In respect for him, I left 60 feet of my property earlier. I'm staying vacant and it's now there's woods, brush, I'm going to plant 100 trees.
And that's great, that absorbs lots of noise, it provides a good bumper.
This is the part that we always ask is when it comes down to neighbors being neighbors. We have to follow the ordinances and we will make our best judgment on it, but we have to follow it. We can't make a King Solomon moment, say, well, I'm going to do this and do this and you guys, that's not, we're not a court. We don't, we have, we have to follow the, the actual rules as stated. Under those rules, what he's asking to do becomes totally, not only legal, but binding for us because he's met all of the criteria. So we have to make sure that the site plan, that's where we're kind of getting to now. This is the official final site plan. Things that we had mentioned, still waiting on a thing for the subject tank and things like that, that they have to, they're trying to go through the hoops to get that. And I'm saying this lovingly towards things that take time. This is one of those things, you have to get it all your ducks in a row. And you start asking questions, they will get an answer for you, and hey, that you would answer it. It's not, I'll have it to you tomorrow.
If I ask this one question, that's it. When you ask, hold him to come and talk to me so that you, so I wouldn't get upset.
That's just what we do because we want people to get along. There's no legal obligation for anybody.
Is that just a question to him? It's not a rule?
It's not a legal thing, we can't, we try to make it so neighbors are neighbors. It's just, it's neighbors are neighbors.
But he didn't, so then it's done. I get it.
That's why we tell people to talk to the neighbors. We just want them to, we, if that's the easiest route, if we can have everybody talking and have everybody come to an agreement, that's the easiest. But that does not prove what we do here at all. It has no basis in what we do.
Thank you.
So I'm going to go to the view.
Are we going to open a comment section?
Let me do that, I'm going to open up a comment section. We already had one with the public hearing last week, but we'll, we'll call this a special comment section. I'm going to open this up at 7:37.
My name is Brett Sealy. I don't live in the township, but I own four parcels here in the township. I own three commercial parcels in Special District on Old Road right downtown, Twin Lake. And I own a fourth residential parcel. So first thing I want to say is I am adamantly opposed to this from my own perspective, but also to support my friends. If you haven't been able to tell, this is quite an issue for him and his family. So I just want to go on record that I, I support him in this endeavor. This is going to be quite detrimental to him at his residence. He, his property is adjacent, his is the only property that is adjacent to this thing. And I would ask if any of you have been out there to see this in person, because you can see, and it, great, you can see how close this facility is going to be to Steve's house. So it is very impactful to him, so I'd like to say that. I'd also like to say, I think this does sound like a great or good or whatever. In the township, but it's in the wrong place. I own three parcels that are commercial, two of them are vacant. He ought to be on one of my parcels or somebody else's parcel, that is, that, this is in the wrong spot. And so when you, as a planning commission, look at these kinds of endeavors, you clearly are trying to help him in this business, it's obvious. But you're not listening to the neighbors. And so I would just ask you to take in the totality of what is required for the township. Now, I'm not speaking with just somebody that owns a, a couple of parcels. I own parcels all around the state. I've been in front of these boards previously, and there are other boards that accommodate like you guys do, specifically Fruitland, for example. So you don't have to do this. You need to listen to everybody in its totality. And I would also just say, I know Steve, I've known Steve for, I don't know, I'm pretty old, I'm 65, maybe 30 years. I know him to be an honest man without question. And if he says that Mike really didn't communicate, Mike might think he tried, but he did not in Steve's mind. Had he communicated early on, months and months and months ago, we, Steve would have made his objections clearly known to this commission and not after the fact. So I would just like to say that I would really like you guys to consider that. But it's clear from the discussion tonight that there's no way as a planning commission, you could approve this tonight. This does not meet the requirements, it's not even really debatable. So hopefully in the future, when he does come back and says he's going to combine the parcels, you would still take into consideration the rest of the neighbors and encourage Mike to maybe go somewhere else in the township.
Okay, all right, well, thank you for your comments.
Yep.
Is there any other comment?
I have a quick comment on that one. We were about that situation. I'm making all the arrangements I possibly can to make it so that Steve won't be interfered with in his life in his little spot where he's at. I'm trying to put trees, I've left 60 acres or 60 feet, but between us, I put a berm up between us so that it's not going to affect him like you think. It's not as if we're going to be like right there to there, it's not.
Yeah, so I haven't listened to Mike all night long and tell these things. And furthermore, I'm going to direct, and I'm going to say.
Sir, we've already, we've already given up people opportunity to speak.
I've heard him say all night long.
He's actually the one that came forward with the proposal. We are dealing with him specifically because that's.
I'm also trying to deal with the ramifications of him coming to use the city.
And anyway.
Listen to him say what he said. And it doesn't matter what he says, it's going to directly impact his.
All right, we have to, we have to get to the point here.
As I was trying to say, I was trying to say, I'm making all the preparations, all the, everything I can to keep him secluded from any kind of situations while we're there. Also, I just want to let you know that I'm not interested in buying any of your, this property in Twin Lake, a commercial property.
Are there, are there any other comments? I'm going to close the comment section at 6:42.
We've got that.
7:42. Time's fine. All right. All right, so where we are right now, following our so if we were, obviously tonight we cannot be able to make the approval on this, but giving guidance on this to meet criteria. If the parcels were combined, we have a site plan that is here. And we were to look at this. Do we have what we need at this point? And we are looking just at the combining of the parcels.
Okay, I, I have a random question. What have we changed the petting zoo ordinance to? Because if he doesn't combine the parcel, he also can't have a petting zoo right there because it's too close to the property line, I think. Because our petting zoo had, which we don't even have, had to be.
You don't combine them, right. I think, I mean, I think, I think you have more combined parcels.
I think there's a lot of reasons to, to attempt to combine them, so I think that's the direction you should take.
If I do the combination, like we're talking now, we do a contingency here at the board right now for approval of the site plan and approval for the special use permit. Continuity that we make the two parcels a joint to go on with this venture.
So I'll just make sure for the record what you're stating is, if you were to now have coming to us, let's see parcels combined and have this site plan, would this be an approval? Or at least would it be, not that we're giving you the approval, but would we be able to stay? Do we feel that that is something we can do at this point?
As you said, there is a subject on that drawing.
So that's not really, that's not really in our wheelhouse anyway. It's drawn right here on the plan, so it's on the plan. It just, and we don't control at all how it's built. That's, Muskegon County will handle all of that. So when we approve anything, it's always contingent upon you getting the proper permits from the proper other authorities, which.
Same thing with the driveway, the other things that you have to go to for approvals. If we aren't able to give the approval, we say you have to meet the criteria.
There is a typo on this. It says the design calls for a 40 by 80 main structure, which is supposed to be 60 by 80, just so everybody knows.
It's right there.
Okay.
48 hundred square feet.
What I can see looks like, I don't, I really think you can go get yourself a permit so that it can be shown on the site plan, because I know the high five.
Oh, yeah, and it can be huge, yes. Yeah, that, I mean, that is a great suggestion.
I just, that last month.
And you've started that process already.
I haven't seen it, in fact, Steve got a, this afternoon, I met, talked to Logan, my wife did. I met with Logan last week and also spoke with Adam, the supervisor, or the guy in charge of septic systems and the permits. Logan's saying that, you know, everything I see out here is great. We're going to put the drain field up higher, higher ground, so it won't have to be above ground even. He said the soil, we did soil samples, soil is good and we can have the septic system hallway here. There's enough room if we have to actually build a second system, which he hardly knows, because the site's going to be a large enough system. We're going to have probably a pool tank system with bump up into our septic system, up into our drain. So it's going to be, it's, the permits are, I have to follow the county permits no matter what anybody says. I have to do regular T, same with my well.
The only issue is if we approve this site plan as you've presented it, and the septic doesn't fit right here and you have to move over this gazebo and move over other things, you'll have to come back to us and.
It's actually going to be, it's actually going to be basically similar to what you're seeing. Actually, it is going to be what you're seeing. The septic tanks will be first, the drain field will be of this, it's a little bit of an incline like this, goes up. And so it's just, I can make it, I can draw that a little bit further into the woods, I guess, but it's, it's going to be determined by the county, what, how I have to set this, this up. He's already done the soil samples, he's out there, he's talking to supervisor Adam. Adam's on board with this. He didn't have quite enough time because he's waiting for a site plans. Wait the break to, the county road commission, wait for a site plan. We've already paid all the money for a commercial driveway to put in. I asked for a residential driveway to be put in, so that I could actually start working in this property and have access in and out.
Casey, I think what you were saying is if, if we approve it with it being right here, and then we were to say yes, and they were to say, no, it needs to move over here.
I just feel bad, you might have to come back.
I'm going to have to change. I got a letter from the same people in the county. I read the note of the drawing, it says providing a reserve area back in the woods.
Yeah, it's on here.
We have another, 30% of that property to move, extend the drain field up at the higher grade of the ground. It says about the drawing.
Right, I was just looking specifically at the septic tank location.
That's what I thought. That was a letter from the, from the county.
We're not, we're not, you think we're trying to deny it based on that? We're giving you advice that.
We're trying to get it right.
We just don't want to, if, if we approve it tonight, we don't want to see you back because something had to be changed.
It does state there's reserve area.
Why read these? I got my magnet flying black, so.
There's a big drawing, there's a big drawing somewhere.
I don't know where.
They want to be 75 feet apart, that's on the, the well is possibly located approximately where they want it. It's away from the drainage area as well as away from the septic area, per county requirements. We don't make this stuff up.
No, we don't care where it goes either. You're misunderstanding me completely.
We just need to act in a way.
Right, if I approve this site plan, this is what goes filed in township record as what's approved.
You have to pay more money, right?
Yep.
Actually, I have yet, though, and I have yet paid for another site plan to come back if it has to change.
You're going to make me the project, huh?
No, we're trying to tell you everything, but we run our own businesses from the township. I've been back for, oh, I had this building's bigger and now I got to pay another fee to come back to the planning commission. We're just trying to let you know that that could happen. So we want to make sure your plan is firm. We're trying to protect you from wasting more money, that's all we're doing. We're trying to do it nicely, but you're not understanding.
Well, I understand exactly, and that's why I have been following, right, everything he has for. And I have jumped over the hoops and, and spent the money, thousands and thousands of dollars. Make this right. I don't want to offend Steve, I don't want to ruin his retirement, home I sold in that property. You know, and I'm not trying to violate his rights, I'm not trying to take away from any of the neighbors. I got petitions from all the neighbors that live right across or alongside Kitty's office or behind.
All right, we've got all, we've got all the things I think we have on that, so based on that. All right. We've got all, we've got all the things I think we have on that. So based on that, if, like I said, if, if the septic system were to be where it is right now, he would be in compliance with what we need and it would be correct. So like I said, wait and see what they tell you on the septic while you combine the parcels. Come back with that and that, if you can get an answer on the septic system, that certainly would make it easier for us. You could say, yeah, I can go right there. That, that's the two things we have to have. Again, based on the requirements that we have here, that is something that would be allowed to vote on at that point.
And just behold, I.
You still might look into combining them and find out what the tax bill would be, just decide it's not possible. So, man, it's, yeah, complex.
So for us then, we would table, would that be something?
We could probably also approve a contingent on these things, right?
You could make a contingent approval.
Thank you.
You need to specify.
What we're waiting for, what needs to, right?
Wouldn't have any permits issued until those things are done.
Well, and the thing is, this is dated March ninth of twenty-five, but am I to assume that the stuff written in pink is possibly new and written on here?
So those would be revisions. So they would.
Can you just stamp this with today's date?
I would say they would need to back with revisions.
Okay, so.
Drawn revisions.
Okay.
Then I would stamp them approved.
Okay.
As long as they match up with.
Well, I understand you don't want to delay this anymore, but what, what are we saving you by approving this with the conditions tonight as opposed to just coming back next month and?
If, if I get the condition right now, I've got, Logan's asking me for an approval, basically, of the site. You want to see a site plan? You like it? You agree to it? All good. The county road commission is asking me now, I need a site plan. Once I see your site plan, it's approved, they're the set. I'll give you that. I've already paid for a commercial drivers driveway in there because.
So you need a site plan as well, but you don't need special use.
Approval before we can say. I need a cycle and approval for your county. There are, everybody, everybody seems like we're getting the permit on something or to move forward or something. You get a bankroll for something. They need to see what my plan is. What is your, what is your?
Yeah.
They want to dial right out.
Yes.
Are we comfortable with that then for tonight?
So maybe we still got a site plan approval, not special use.
Yeah.
Because with that, so approval of a site plan only contingent upon approval like the special use.
Okay.
With the combination of the two blocks, right, two parcels.
Well, that would, that's what he's going to do to get the special use approved.
Right.
Right.
I think that would be split up, approved the site plan or application. Of course, home, a decision on the special land use. And the site plan would be contingent upon site plan or special use approval.
They're going to hand it.
So we still need to see the.
Without the special use permit, I don't need a site plan. Without a site plan, I don't need a special use permit. That's why I'm coming with both these proposals and contingency on both of them. On both the plan and the special permits. They can both be contingent that we're able to join these two properties. So it's ten acre parcel on that corner. And then I actually then could use my address, which another thing they're looking for is what's the address? I have that, I have so many times. I'll use my own address then, so it'll be contingency. There would be contingency then to both the, the special use permit and also the site plan contingency that I join these two properties. Which I'll probably not have to spend money on surveyors and whatever else. I don't know. I have no idea, but man, I can only go so far. I'm trying to do a family business, not a corporation. It's, I don't know. I don't have that empty check or that full check for it.
As far as I'm concerned, the only sticking point is joining the parcels. Am I wrong? Are we missing? The site plan looks fine to me. And so, I mean, I could, you could approve this, but you could also, also approve the special use contingent upon joining the parcel. I think that's really the only sticking point.
That's what Stephen had said, that would be the way that they would get around.
Unless somebody else sees something on here that doesn't, doesn't work.
The parking's been, I mean, everything out there that changed was, was all meets the criteria and.
If I could, the gentleman said that he's not in a hurry. He's got delayed. This construction has been pushed out. I, what is the, what is the hurry from the board's perspective when he hasn't met all of your own? You've, you've spoken at nauseam tonight that he hasn't met the requirement that you.
Because we're only waiting on one thing.
But you're waiting.
He could get that.
Pregnant.
You could get that next week and then why does he have to wait a whole month?
I'm not talking to you. He hasn't met.
We've closed the public comment also. So we've given you a courtesy by letting you stake that. So at this point.
Everybody else, everybody else has spoken at heart. So I don't think there's going to be much courtesy. I would just say, I don't understand.
And again, you don't have a parcel that's within the, the area. You're speaking for someone, which you've already made clear to us. So we appreciate your confidence. Thank you.
How, how long does it take to join a parcel? Like, what's the process? It's not too difficult at all. And I don't think there's a charge or anything, is there?
There's no fee.
Okay.
Um, and you, there's a form that says you list the parcel numbers and state that you wish to combine them.
Okay.
And then the assessor. Let's approve their. They're combined and then the assessor officially legally combines them.
Okay.
For tax purposes at the beginning of the next year.
Right, okay. So, but I mean, this, you can combine the parcels and get an okay from the assessor within a couple of days, can't you? I mean, they know right away.
I don't see any more than a couple, a couple of weeks.
Okay.
It's normally not something that's denied.
Correct.
But if we did it under the contingency, then at that point, it is taken care of until they bring that back. They bring that to you and at that point, once and then we have the contingency in there, then that would be something that would move forward at that point, correct? They wouldn't have to come back to us if.
If it's a contingency, I would just make sure those have that met.
Okay, then that would be something that would be, I'm bringing that in for, I'm just trying to give them the pass so they wouldn't have to come back to another meeting. It would be just going to you to get that, to show that the contingencies have been met.
Correct.
Okay. We need to get the parcel numbers or just combine the parcels?
I get it.
For sample motion, you know, like. Yeah, it just says I made a motion. So somebody's.
That the subject property is combined with.
Because I think, because I think the vacant parcel is correct, except the last two are zero one now. And then the parent parcel, it's not zero, zero, two anymore. It's zero, zero, three. And other than that, so there's one digit, there's, there's two digits in the vacant parcel that are wrong and there's one digit in the main parcel that's wrong. I wrote them down so I know whenever. Yes. Well, and it's funny because these, that's the same.
Oh, they're.
Oh, yeah, they're the same. So that's a typo too, because it's saying two different parcels, but it's the same parcel.
What if you do, the numbers on the application?
Okay, so the numbers on the application, I don't believe are correct. Um, the thirty parcel doesn't seem to exist anymore. It seems to be in zero, one.
No, so these two parcels were in existence at the time of the application.
Okay.
And then they were, yeah, applicant, after you applied, combined them both into one, it would be five acres.
Oh.
Yes.
Thank you. I thought you. I thought you were talking about his residence and the vacant parcel. The vacant parcel used to be two parcels.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's the same.
Alright. Gotcha. Okay, perfect.
We have to combine the two parcels. The site plan approval would be.
They're both contingent upon.
The septic system and the driveway.
The septic system is shown on here. So as long as the tanks are right there and the reserve drain field goes out in that area, then there's really no problem there.
And basically I spoke with Paul and Paul basically said that I've already been approved for residential permit. I've got that for that. But we're going to step it up. And I basically said that when I went through the process. You get a commercial, it took a lot longer to get a driveway, so.
We'll get, yeah, driveways, I think with you're in the process, that, that's, that'll be. We'd like to mention that in there. So it's really just the combination of the two parcel number. I don't have to have the numbers.
Yeah, I don't, we don't need to spell out. I mean, it says somewhere on here that he needs to have a commercial driveway. So if the county denies the commercial driveway, either one of them, then, then it's probably coming back to us.
Correct.
Yeah, somebody formulating a motion?
Is the dash thirty that's primary? No, the dash thirty and the dash zero, zero are both combined into the, oh, so that's, that's, so we don't, I would say combine it with the parcel bonus twenty-nine eighty-seven, fill in row.
Yeah.
Okay.
The only problem I have is that there's just so many typos still. Like on this sheet right here, it talks about, it says site work summary and it says event barn limited to eight thousand square foot full barn structure. And then right here it says forty-eight hundred square foot building. So I just, how detailed do we have to be considering there's so many errors here? Like, we're approving, the site plan shows a sixty by eighty. So is that sufficient? Even if it says eight thousand square feet here, like, are we approving this or?
I think. The approval should also.
Do I have to delay it till everything says what it's supposed to say?
I think there's been enough. We have looked at this for a considerable amount of time. And I, I understand the, if I had my way, you do whatever you want with your property. It's my personal opinion. But we obviously have some rules here that we have to follow. And there's just been a considerable amount of discussion. I just personally, there's just too much here. I know, I know it might not appear that way. Everybody's got their side of this, right? But there's just been too much going on here that I think, I don't feel comfortable even doing any kind of conditional anything.
It's going to be a paragraph.
Yeah, it's going to, it's going to be a paragraph and, um, and that's not, I want you to be able to do this. I really do. I want everybody to be able to do what they want to do with the property. That's, but there's just too much, too much here. So.
So this page also, it says an occupancy of two hundred, but another one of your pages says occupancy of a hundred and twenty-five.
If you're having problems with those things, I'll put it right here in the third case. It's not going to work, okay? I gave you the form. I gave you what it's going to be.
So they changed it from last, but they, there's a couple of areas that they.
It was changed. It was changed so I could, so I can make things right for the neighbors. So I would have to, I mean, I put my papers. You know, they change the sound and barrier of the trees are there. We're going to plant a hundred trees on, probably two thousand feet in some way.
That's, that is not even our issue right now. Actually, we have this speaking to what we are going to do here. So do we want to, you want to table for another month and bring them back to next month with everything completed and the combination of the property?
Could be the cleanest.
It would. It would make the motion much simpler without all the contingencies and stuff and.
We've had special meetings before. Yeah, I was, I was going to say, while everyone is talking, I was writing down some, some questions for ourselves as to how this even came to be. And what we could possibly take a look at to. Be better or, you know, this quicker. You have been here, you jumped through a lot of hoops. So, but I think, I think we're now the best thing.
I, I understand you guys. I really do. I understand your viewpoints and you don't want to make wrong assumptions. It just gets frustrating. We're bringing you that. I've spent thousands and thousands of dollars on permits, engineering, land, borings. I've done everything that this committee has to me. And it always seems I come back and it's just, one more thing we got to jump through this.
We are, we are to conclusion, I think, that the things we need to be able to say yes.
And help from me now, do that.
The problem is your pages don't match. I mean, it's hard for us to approve something when all the pages don't match.
So if everything matches on that, so that your building sizes are consistent from one to the other, and if you're one with the, like the occupancy changes on one, if it's all the same, and if we rush it through and we have differences like that, that makes it be problematic. It just, it's sloppy on our side and it's not on your side.
Yes, we need to get it, we need to get it.
So do we want to potentially do next month's meeting? If you want to do a meeting of another meeting, what would be the best way to? I don't know how long it's going to take to get the.
I guess I would wait till the next meeting if I don't have you guys. But I, I don't know how long it's going to take. You mentioned like a couple of weeks. You know, especially me, before that, I would be able to get the papers for you, I guess.
Steve has the list of the things that we have to do to have, to see that. So.
Does this, this mean a question, Steve, the, the five acre parcel, I know it, you know, it was two that joined together. Did it have its own single parcel number?
It does now, yes.
It does now.
It's that.
Just because I just.
Yeah.
This makes it confusing when you have the multiple, you know, even on the application here, you have, you have the multiple parcel numbers. You didn't have one parcel.
Yes, and that was.
That's, that's.
The combination.
Right, because you have a two, like a two and a half acre parcel, a two and a half acre parcel. Plus you would need to talk about the main parcel, yeah.
But it's already been combined, so it's not.
It's not really two anymore, correct?
I think that's, that's, no, I mean, no, it's just, we could say. At the, at the time of the combination, they have the application. Those were the, those were the numbers.
Yeah. How do you reference those in the future though?
Yeah, so I'm going to seek some clarification.
Okay.
From the committee about.
Whether we can cross it off and now.
How we address it, if it changed parcel numbers, because the property descriptions of those parcel numbers.
Are correct.
Are going to be the same.
Right. I read through them.
So, you know, it's going to be the same.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just so they want to make sure, don't need any additional.
So the next meeting, it would be again, we continue it under unfinished business and then we would address it at that point.
Right.
Okay.
I guess, one question. If I do what you're asking me to do and I join these two properties together and I come back to the committee and they go, now that we're not really comfortable with it, am I going to then go back home again? Because I'll still have all the joint properties. So it'd be one, a larger tax bill, but still really nothing to accomplish. Follow the septic and all the things that I.
Hopefully that answers on septic by the, by the next meeting. I can't promise, but that's, that's the only thing. All we need to know is that it didn't move. We don't care what they tell you. It's just if it moved out here, then that gives you a chance to move it out here when you present it and you're not going back again.
So basically, your, your final, our final approval could yet contain that contingent. So you don't have to do that, this thirty day window of combining properties. Okay, for the next thirty days, you, you don't have to combine those properties until you get an approval from this committee on the special use. And once you have that, right, then you can go ahead.
No, you need to, you need to get.
Well, otherwise we have to make a contingent at the next meeting on the fact that he.
That's right.
He investigates whether he wants to do it and then at the next meeting, we have to say, okay, it is contingent upon you combining the parcels and.
So you're not burdened by a tax bill that ultimately has no relationship with how you're using the property. So you're not burdened by a, a tax bill that ultimately has no relationship at how we're using the property. Right, so.
But I think what he's asking is, is this the only sticking point? If the parcels were the same tonight, would we be approving it? Is basically what he wants to know. Because otherwise I think he doesn't want to go any further if he's going to come back next month with his either contingent parcels combined or the parcels combined and we say, yeah, no, we actually just didn't like the whole plan at all and there's a lot more problems and, yeah. To me, that is all we're waiting on. It's for you to comply with that one section of the ordinance to be part of the principal.
That takes you out of this, so this is how we enable that. So once you meet that, that's no longer a sticking point or a reason that we, we can't deny. We can deny based on not having that? We can't, we have to, once you have that part of it. Once we get to this part, then it, back into the, where we start the floor, your site plan just needs to be the one that you say, this is my site plan. That's what we're going forward with. Then we have a way to, and again, as long as the septic doesn't move on here or anything moves on here. Because again, if that moves, someone else might have to move.
Right, because we're, we're speaking with Logan like I did, there was two sites where we could put the drain. That's why you did the warrants. The first site that we did, um, he looked at it and said, you know, you may have problems down the road with the septic in there, the drain field. Because this little pointer is way down. And I said, okay, can we make this our second shot, we can do that. And I moved him up a little bit higher ground and he took four sample down, it was three feet and he said, this is good ground. Definitely can approve this, um, and you won't even have to point the ground with your septic.
But he needs the site plan, is that what you're saying? He needs a site plan?
Yes, he needs a site plan and he needs a site plan for him and he needs a site plan for Paul. I need a site plan to go do banking, so it probably, who knows, three, four months to, by the time they come up with a rule. What I'm trying to do is at least, I know we didn't make April, we're not going to make April construction. I have to line these concrete ones up once in a hand. So I mean, I have to get, you know, septic crew lined up, well crew lined up. So I keep pushing it on further, further into like May and, and June and I might not get anybody to come involved, you know? Like everybody's going to go, hey, you should have talked to me about six months ago.
Is it something we're comfortable saying if they were today's joint property? Are we where we need to be with this?
No, I think we, I think John has said that he wants them to clean it all up. Make sure their application, everything is in line.
We're going to the site plan, just clean it up.
Right.
But I shouldn't say we, I'm going to the site plan and just clean up the details and get the parts and back.
We'll get to next month, um.
Okay, I make a motion to, um.
Hold on.
Wait, we'll talk to him again.
So since it's a continuance of last month, we should only, only people who were at that hearing should be voting.
Oh, good.
We're just making a discussion, but.
Alright.
Is that way, the way it goes to the end then?
It is.
Oh.
Stay behind us too.
We had three board members absent last week, so he does not want us, we will abstain from, from voting on this motion and.
It's best practice.
Yes. Thank you.
Mine. Well then. So essentially those four have to be here next week, next month. Oh, next month, so right now he's, he's abstaining. How the heck is that?
Can I ask why he's abstaining? He has no financial gain, he, it doesn't say anywhere. Shouldn't we talk about, I don't think he needs to abstain from this. I don't see how.
Oh.
Oh, he wasn't there, you weren't there last month?
No, I was on the floor.
So why does he have to abstain?
We're tableing this.
Did you abstain it on your own or did someone tell you?
And it is for.
I was only impressed I was supposed to because of interjected thought that regarded both mine and this, I guess.
I encourage him to bring it up, um, like if he felt yet, that he should at least bring it up.
Oh, okay. Okay, because I think, like I, when the guy was here about the campground, I was, I voted on that. I don't feel like I have a conflict of interest from somebody.
Yeah, that is something you, you just have to make it, um. Make it known because somebody's good.
Oh, yes, okay.
So we have a, we have a way to table this, just stating no stipulations?
Yeah, you could say postpone decision contingent upon the applicant, um. Resubmitting final. A final site plan.
Combining the properties, but we now have to address that because.
You could make that a condition now or you can make that a condition of approval.
Just table.
Yeah, that's, you have to make a motion to table it though.
Yeah, yeah, that's what.
I can try and tell us what to say.
Just postpone a decision to give the opportunity, you know, the opportunity to resubmit a clean site plan.
Make a motion to postpone, uh, PC twenty five dash zero three, making lot at East, uh, East McDonald Road, special land use and site plan review for special events, then you, uh, to next month to get a chance to submit a clean site.
All right, can, okay.
Support. All right, take a roll on that. Dave, yes. Jesse?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
All right, we'll table it next month.
Okay, now I get to sign that. It's on my phone for a while. All I was reading was what was in my packet, package, that's what's.
Okay, we're going to move on our agenda.
Okay, well, you'll just want to talk to Stephen about what's in the packets, very strict.
All right, guys, we're going to move on to our next. All right, we're going to have to take a conversation out there if we want to continue. Otherwise, we're going to continue on with new business, PC twenty five old six.
I don't know, are you doing something on background?
And the mini, final site plan for PUD twenty six nine five hind row. Would like to come forward?
Oh, I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good.
Okay.
So everything was.
And we need to rehearse against even that play on the stage.
This is the final stage. He amended his plan unit development last month, that was the rezoning phase.
Right, yeah.
And then, you know, now he needs to do the final site plan to reflect every, all the changes made in the PUD. And at the same time, he needs to amend his condominium so that the property lines for the new locations can be correct.
So in construction terms, what changed?
The only thing that changed was.
I think so.
Yes, we set an empty two between the building.
Right.
You had to move the setbacks.
Right.
Of the foot and then we're just pushing the building eleven feet. So we wouldn't have any problem with fire poles.
I remember.
Yeah.
Okay.
Other than that, that was it.
All right, we do have a sample motion down here with somebody here to do so. I need to probably at this point state Casey had stepped down due to a counter. Interest. Okay, so we have, we'll make. All right.
Make a motion to approve the final site development plan to amend the existing PUD.
Yes.
Yes.
PUD at twenty six ninety five hind. I further move to recommend that the township board oppose condominium at twenty six ninety five hind.
Everyone follow on this? Dave, yes. Is he abstaining? Jesse?
Yes.
Lee? Behind?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Kevin?
Yes.
All right, we are now at the.
Make a motion to adjourn.
The second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, for us. He gets eight points.